This time I'd like to call the June 17th Half Moon Bay City Council meeting to order, please. At this time, we'll have roll call, please.
Hi, Ms. Patrick.
Here.
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 Mayor Mueller.
Here. And we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. So at this time, I welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. There's a number of items we will be discussing and working on, so I appreciate your patience. At this time, we will go through presentations, and first one will be with our Coastside County Water District General Manager, Dave Dixon, please.
Push green button to speak. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I really appreciate the staff and your city manager putting me at the top of the agenda. I want to tell you very briefly about a bridge problem we have.
Dave, may I ask you to pull that up a little bit? Thank you.
A bridge problem. Well, it's actually a pipeline problem. You see on your handout and on the screen up there, a picture of a section of our Main Street pipeline that goes over the Main Street Bridge. It's attached to the side of the bridge. On the next slide, you can see how it's attached. Well, anyway, it's on your handout. There we go. It's actually attached to the wall under the west sidewalk and is supported by the same brackets that hold up the sidewalk. This is a 60 or 70-year-old pipe. It's one of the original pipelines in Half Moon Bay. It's welded steel. It's past the end of its useful life. Its fellow pipes have failed and been replaced long ago. The district has replaced all of this pipeline, with the exception of the section about 200 or 300 feet that goes over the Main Street Bridge. So coming right up to the north side of the bridge, we have a 16-inch pipeline, and then going south, from the south end of the bridge, we have 16-inch pipeline. So we had always assumed that when the city built its new bridge or rehabilitated the bridge, that we would simply fasten a new section of pipeline to the bridge. We recognize that there's some uncertainty with regard to the bridge replacement or rehabilitation schedule, and we're very concerned about the integrity of this pipeline. It's really our main artery to everything south of Pillar Cetus Creek. Without this pipe, we'd have very poor water service every place south of Pillar Cetus Creek. So in the next slide and on the back of the handout, you can see what we're proposing to do in order to get out of the way of whatever project the city contemplates. We're planning to cross the creek between the Monitis property and the cul-de-sac at the end of Purissima. We'll then go up Purissima to Mill and then up Mill and reconnect to the 16-inch on Main Street at Main Street. The other thing I want to mention briefly is that should this pipeline break, we will need to put a temporary pipeline somewhere just to keep the south side of our district supplied, and the only practical place to do that's going to be across the western sidewalk. And I've indicated with the yellow line where that would be. We may actually request the city's permission to put a temporary pipeline in place. We recognize that closing that western sidewalk, which I think would be necessary, is not going to be a very popular option, but it's really essential to the district's water supply that we maintain this link. You can see the western sidewalk here. There's really no way for us to repair or replace this pipeline in its current spot. We'd have to take -- I'm not sure how they got it on there, but we'd have to basically disassemble the whole sidewalk and work over the side of the bridge and then rebuild the sidewalks. It's not going to be very practical. So I just wanted to introduce this idea to you. I can answer any questions you might have. You'll be hearing more about it, and I thank you very much.
Yes, Councilman Patrick. Dave, you've got to punch yours off so we can get ours.
Thanks. You just came up with the thing that I was concerned about, Dave, was the crossing of that pedestrian way on the west side. So you're going to actually lay your pipe on that sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes.
So do you know approximately how long it would be before you would do your permanent pipeline?
The board, the CCWD board at its last meeting approved a design contract for the new pipeline, and we'll be out there tomorrow morning with the geotech contractor, so it's going to move fairly quickly. Timing of the permits will be kind of uncertain. We don't think it'll be a complex environmental or permitting process, and I would expect that we could be building it by next -- we could be building the new pipeline by next summer. So with some luck in the permitting, we could be -- we could have it completed by fall of 2015.
So I believe next steps will be, CCWD will be coming back to staff regarding their proposed plans. Is that correct, staff?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, and we will be standing by.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry. I do have one question through the mayor. I'm just curious, have you considered yet the approach to crossing the creek? Are you going under, you're going over? Has it been discussed, or is it too soon?
We're going to go under in the same way that we put the El Granada replacement pipeline under Frenchman's Creek. Involves digging a hole about 40 feet deep and then pushing the pipeline underneath the creek and then bringing it up and reconnecting it on the other side.
Very good. No further questions. Thank you. At this time, we will move on to the future teen center here, Atcock Center presentation, and I'm not sure who's making that presentation. Some -- it's going to be the Boys and Girls Club? Right. But I wasn't sure what member.
It's Judith.
Judith.
Right. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Oh, there you go. Good evening. Thank you for having us. So this is just to let you guys know a little bit of the progress that we're making with our teen center. As you see the phrase up there, it says "creating positive agents of change." This was a phrase that we came up with at our last Board Retreat. I have with me today Caitlin Giacominio, our program director, who will help me with this presentation for you guys. Some of the teen programs and activities that we'll have will be focused on helping kids succeed in school, explore careers, find employment, stay healthy, pursue diverse interests, and most importantly, have fun. The Ted Atcock Teen Center programs will include job training, job placement, mock interviews, basketball tournaments, open gym basketball, leadership programs, money management, mentee and mentor opportunities, teen nights, cooking, resume writing, college tours, volunteer and community service opportunities, college applications and financial aid assistance, SAT and ACT preparation, scholarships, database with local scholarships, computers and online safety, teen staff positions, tutoring and peer tutoring, community resources, outreach sports with our soccer program, swim program, surf, and skateboarding. So as you see, we're looking to create more than a hangout place. We're actually looking to create a place where the teens can come and hang out, but also get resources and help with as they grow in their high school years and also move forward towards their college careers. So how are we going to make this happen? So the teen center project will be overseen by myself, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, the program director Caitlin Giacominio. We have currently with us Laura, who is -- has her master in psychology, who is going to become our education director and will be in charge of helping the kids with their college applications and finding resources for financial aid and anything that has to do with college. We also have Ryan, who is our staff member currently. He helps us out when we need it, but as we move forward with the teen center, he'll be working with us. He is also a college graduate, so we have great qualified staff, and as we move forward, that's what we're looking for, staff that has been to college and has been through it so that they can help the kids. So the teen center hours will be a little different than what we currently have with the after-school program, because we understand teens are allowed to hang out for longer hours than middle school kids. It'll be a lot of trial and error, but our thought is to begin with 12 to 7. If you asked why 12, we are looking to work with the kids from Pillar Cetus. We actually did meet with Roche to try to figure out how some of our programs can help those kids earn some credits for graduation. And then the only -- the other important aspect that we have to the teen center is that it's open to all the teens. We want to make a difference rate between the high school age and the middle school age, so we put 14 and up, which means that some of the older, more mature middle school kids can come to the teen center, but it's mainly geared towards the older high school kids or the older community teens that we have here in Half Moon Bay and the coast side. We do have an optional membership, so we're hoping that anybody that will come in will want to become a member of the club so that we can better service them and have greater follow-up with them so that we can offer more help. But the door is open to anyone that would like to come in and be a part of our teen center. So this is a little bit of the layout that we're planning. As you see, we -- I don't know if you guys have had a chance to peek, but we removed a lot of walls. We're looking for a lot of open space, and Caitlin can tell us a little bit more about what the color areas mean and what they're going to be.
So the areas highlighted in the orange, when they first walk in the door, that will be the greeting reception desk. In the orange area is where the hangout area, pool table, art, game center, foosball, and DJ station will take place. The blue area is the computer studying tutoring room. This room is also important to note that during non-teen hours, this room can be turned into a closed-door meeting room. Also, it can be a multi-use facility. The green area on the map is the Parks and Recreation Shared Office Space.
And along with the teen center, as we are getting ready to be the managers of Parks and Recs for the city, we also have plans for the Train Depot that I didn't know existed until a few months ago. But we're planning to do some upgrades to turn it more into a destination for conferences and meetings. But with our teen center, this main room will continue to be available to be used for, you know, for these kind of meetings, ongoing classes, and other events. We are also looking to upgrade the kitchen, and we are going to be installing a security system throughout the building, especially as we're hoping that right out here will be the house of our new skate plaza. And as we're moving forward with Parks and Recs, these are some of the things that we've done so far, as we have, I think unofficially, taken over Parks and Recs for the last couple of weeks. We hire Mike Wright, who has been the Community Recreation Director for over 30 years. He used to work for Millbrae, and we're very lucky to have him. He's been helping us through these weeks. What else is here? So here is how we are preparing for the transition of Parks and Recs back to Half Moon Bay. So on the summer, with that collaboration of the Y and the Boys and Girls Club, we put out a summer guide of activities that are available right now. Also, the main four classes that are very popular are still continuing to function and exist as we transition. As you guys know, I think the Y will start their camp either next week or to restart it this week, and it's located in here. We will be starting our camp in a couple of weeks, and we will be doing our camp for sixth to eighth graders at the middle school. We are also very excited that we are going to be able to run Open Swim again, and that starts tomorrow. So if you want to swim, it's open from 11 to 3, Monday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays from 1 to 5. And we are also very lucky to have already some -- the facility booked for some of the private parties and other people that are interested. And what we're looking for the fall, as we start to move forward, we are working with a web-based registration software specialist that will make registration easier for anybody that's interested in signing up on the class. We have proposals for classes already. Mike has been busy working with those. We already translated some of the rental documents to Spanish, and our goal is just to make sure that that community knows that this place is available and that we get the most of it. And what we're also, you know, as we move forward, we understand that it's a group effort. It's not something that we can do ourselves. So we have already received proposals from CCP to have some classes oriented towards moms in the morning and early education for the younger kids. The Y has also sent us a proposal for fitness, adult classes in the morning hours and nights. And this summer, we're actually working with the library so they can use this room for some of their bigger shows. And along with the library, the Y for the camps 8 through 5 will be also being -- becoming a part of them so they can collaborate as well. So as we are just, you know, we're just looking to collaborate with everyone to make sure that this works. And we just wanted to say thank you for believing in us and giving us the opportunity to manage Parks and Recs for the community of Half Moon Bay and not only for the kids. If you have any questions.
We'll start here. Red Councilman Alafano.
Do I have to turn this off?
Yes, we can't handle too much at once here. Caitlin and Judah, thanks very much for coming tonight, and I'm really happy to see what you're all going to be offering to the young people in our community. I mean, if we remember back, I think it was about four years ago, we were in here. This place was filled overflowing. We had the shootings in town, and one of the messages was loud and clear, is we need places for our kids to go after school. So I'm really pleased to hear that all the things you guys are planning. I would like to see you all come back maybe every month or two and give us an update. I'd like to hear some success stories, you know, what's working well, and where you see areas for growth that maybe you're running into, areas that don't have enough room for expansion. So anything we can do within our powers to help the youth out and keep them active in the afternoons is great. So thank you for coming.
Councilman Walteck.
Yes, I want to echo all those sentiments, and I want to ask you about the membership item. So could you review that with me? Was it $30? And what does that go toward?
Okay, so our membership goes just to help some of the fees that we pay, you know, as being part of the national organization of the Boys and Girls Club of America. But as you see, there -- we understand that there's kids that will be able to pay the $30, but if you're not able to pay the $30, so if you choose instead of paying $30 to do volunteer hours, that actually helps us a lot more. So we want to encourage more of the mentoring program that we currently have. So if you're not able to pay $30, so if you don't feel like paying $30, you can always work 15 hours of mentor, and we'll send you back to our CUNYAS school site where you can help the younger grades with their homeworks and guidance.
Thank you. So I can -- I don't have the time to go to CUNYAS to mentor, but I would like that. And so would you see me -- catch up with me privately, and I'd like to make a donation for -- to help offset some of the membership costs, and I'll give one month of my city council salary toward that, and I'm happy to do that. Don't be too surprised, it's not that much, but I'm happy to do that. But catch up with me after, and we'll take care of that. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank the leadership there in the audience also, and we thank you, and I know it's been challenging for a lot of families, so very good. So thank you, and keep up the good work, and we can't wait, and this is for the whole community. You're in the room tonight, this is for everyone, so let's keep moving forward on this project. So thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I think what I'll do is I'll have Nicole and Jeremy start first, and then with our speakers for the west Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge, they can respond also, and we'll give them a little time at the end to wrap up after the speakers make their comments, if I may, and I'll take that liberty. So we'll start with Senator Jerry Hill's representative.
Hi there, I'm Nicole Fernandez. I'm a senior field representative in Senator Jerry Hill's office. I am here to address the item about the Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge. On behalf of Senator Hill, he wanted to thank everybody within Half Moon Bay and outside Half Moon Bay for contacting our office and Assemblymember Gordon's office about the broken bridge. As you may know, Parks had been in touch with our office indicating that they would be sending a representative to provide an update to the city concerning the repair of the Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge. Unfortunately, that representative, Parks rescinded that offer, and they decided that they would rather send a representative after the report has come out, which we expect in a few weeks to a month. So I just wanted to come here tonight to thank the community for their feedback. Senator Hill understands what an important part, what an important role that the Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge plays in this, on the Coastal Trail and here in Half Moon Bay. I wanted to share that repair of the Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge does, is a priority project for Parks, and it is part of a $40 million package in the state budget that was approved by the California State Legislature on Sunday. Senator Hill is committed to seeing the Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge restored in some capacity, and we welcome any feedback or thoughts that the community may have. You can contact us on our website via our website at senate.ca.gov/hill, or you can email me personally at nicole.fernandez@scn.ca.gov, or call us at 650-212-3313. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, and then we'll have the other speakers come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jeremy Dennis, I'm the district director for state Assemblyman Rich Gordon, and I wanted to come on behalf of the Assemblyman to lend his support to whatever efforts the city council needs in restoring the bridge back to capacity. We stand by to reinforce anything that you require from us. The Assemblyman did appreciate all the comments that he received over the last couple of months regarding the bridge, and both of our offices stand by, so thank you.
Yeah, and I want you all to know that from the time that bridge was closed, a number of us worked as close as we could with Senator Hill and Assemblymember Gordon. No matter whether we were a social function or whatever, we had tried to move this forward, and they continue to move it forward. They got as much grief as some of us have gotten. So I'm going to do these cards at this time. I think it's fair to do that. I can take the liberty to do that. Is that okay, Tony? And so we'll have Paulette, please, and followed by Shirley. And this is regarding the Coastal Trail Bridge. And I think we've got to talk about the Frenchman's Creek Bridge, too, because that thing's looking pretty shaky. Some of you bring that up for me.
Yeah, that's a total disaster as well. Okay, so Paulette Eisen, and I'm here with my grandson, who was always crossing this bridge, and that's the way that he can bicycle from school over to my house and as well as just to be able to come to my house without having to get into a car, which, of course, he can't drive. He getting into a car or else putting himself in danger by biking or even walking along, you know, Highway 1 and all those other, that other passageway, which is insufficient, especially for young children, to be crossing and moving around. It's too dangerous. So I just want to get a show of hands from everybody who's here, especially for this specific issue. All right, so we have quite a few people, which thank you very much for coming out, by the way. Very disappointed that the Parks and Rec person didn't come. I'm sorry that none of the offices here or from the state or anything could not move, at least a representative, to even show up and say, what we have found out by walking down to at the bridge is that they have cleared underneath the bridge, they said, in order to get engineers to be able to make an assessment of what's going on there. So at least to have somebody come out and say, hey, we're working on it, we've taken step one, here's where we'll take step two. I mean, it's pretty disappointing when all these people have shown up and we can't get anybody to be here when they said they're going to be here. So that's something I'd like to see more effort from anybody who knows people in the Parks and Rec Department, to get them to be more responsive to this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Shirley, please. Is she in the room here? Yes. Hollin? Holly. That'll be followed by Walter Sencing.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. My name is Shirley Holly. I've been a Half Moon Bay resident for 10 years. I want to just say briefly that that bridge belongs to the people, and it is stunning that it's taking so long to get it fixed, and that there aren't, there is no representative here who has, who is, who has the responsibility for getting it fixed. It doesn't really matter who has, who has ownership of the bridge. That bridge belongs to the people, and it needs to be fixed immediately. It's just amazing that it's not being attended to.
Thank you. Walter and John Hernandez, please.
Hi, I'm Walter Sencing. I live at 439 Keough here in Half Moon Bay, and I first would like to thank the city council for their efforts in trying to get the proper attention to deal with this issue, and I very much appreciate that.
We'll make sure that's on the record.
Yeah.
We need a little humor, I think, at times.
As it should be. And I likewise am disappointed that State Parks couldn't have someone here tonight, even if they didn't have the engineering reports available to them. They could be here to listen to our concerns and to get a feel for what the community here is missing by not having this vital link restored for us. As Paulette and Shirley had mentioned, it's tragic that at this day and time, we can't have these matters attended to, of so much importance to us in a timely manner, and at least have somebody step up and take some responsibility for it. I am appreciative of Nicole and Jeremy and Senator Hill and Assemblymember Gordon having rallied behind this issue as well, and we need their support, and I appreciate their being here tonight to let us know that they're here for us. And both representative, both of Hill and Gordon had responded to our emails, and I'm appreciative of that as well. One thing I would like to mention is I've looked at the bridge, as many of us have, and I've even illegally crossed it, I guess you might say, but it seems to me that there should be some way to restore some functionality here in the interim. I suspect that it's not going to be fixed immediately. That would be my guess. There are permitting activities that have to take place. There are permitting activities that have to take place, the funding has to get in place, the bidding, all that stuff. Nothing's going to happen quickly, no doubt, and three months have already transpired since the failure. But it seems to me that there could be some type of interim measure at least to get this link opened again and the Sweetwater Bridge is, in addition to this bridge, is the next thing to be a problem and both of the bridges need to be addressed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hernandez, please, and then Brian Holt will be the last one on this item.
John Hernandez, when my name was put on the bridge over Pillar Cetus Creek in 1994, I thought it would last longer than I would. I have contacted State Parks every year or two for the last 10 years, trying to get them to repair the bridge, as well as the one over Frenchman's Creek. I am disappointed that their inactivity has resulted in the failure of two key links in the California Coastal Trail. I was hoping that a representative would be here, but again, no show. Thank you.
Thank you and let's hope that name stays on there for many, many years to come. And you too. Brian, please.
Good evening, I'm Mayor Mueller, City Council. My name is Brian Holt, I'm a resident of 472 Myrtle in Arleta Park neighborhood, also a representative on your General Plan Advisory Committee, and I happen to work in the parks field, work for one of our regional park agencies here, so I have a fair amount of experience with State Parks and with their process. I think the one message that I hope we can all leave with is that this is the one bridge issue on the coast side that we can all agree on. This bridge needs to be fixed and it's not just a recreation issue. This is an important tourism destination for folks from San Francisco, from over the hill, from all over. So, this trail and this bridge is important to the coast side economy and it's also, as mentioned before, an important community connector. So, one of the things I take great pleasure in when I talk to my friends who live over the hill and they complain about traffic in town is I say, "You know, I don't always notice it." Because I hop on my bike, I ride on the Coastal Trail, I can get down to the harbor, I can get to my friends' houses in different neighborhoods. It's our connection to avoid the traffic that's in this community that affects us all. So, with that, I'd just like to urge in strongest terms that the city, the county, the state, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, whoever potentially on the coast side has an interest in parks, trails, outdoor recreation economy, to get together and find a solution, an interim solution and a permanent solution that will fund and repair the maintenance of that bridge and make sure that it operates in perpetuity. And just to, I guess, defend State Parks a little bit, you know, they're operating at a budget that's similar to what it was in the early 1980s. So, as a community, as citizens of California, we all need to make sure that we're supporting our parks, that they're properly funded, we can't just build a bridge and not provide funds to maintain it. So, I hope the message goes up to the state that these are important assets to our community, they're recreational assets, they're economic assets, and they're really central to our quality of life and we need to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to conclude comments, Jeremy or Nicole? Otherwise, we will move on, but I'm sure you're hearing it loud and clear and so I'll conclude.
Well, we are and it's a pleasure to actually be able to come out and hear them firsthand and we have received emails and responded to them regarding this matter and, as I said in our comments, and I know that speaking for Nicole and Senator Hill, that we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that this moves along as quickly as possible. So, we, we're available for anything you need.
Thank you. And I think that concludes this item. I believe with the number of items we have this evening, we will pass over this year and review. I know there's a lot of positives we wanted to share with the community, but at this time, I think we better move forward because we do have a lot of people and patience is very important to all of us right now. So, I'll move on to my mayor's announcements, I'll be very brief. The only one I have is on June 19th, coming up, I guess Thursday night, at 5:30, the ribbon cutting at Odyssey outside here on Miramontes and Main Street. I was always joking about the big pole out there, that it was going to be like New Jersey where the diving horse was going to jump in the swimming pool, but I guess not. So, that'll be opening up there. Does anyone else have comments for coming up here, activities?
Tomorrow night at Cameron's, Coastside Hope will be having their annual barbecue, so encourage everybody to go.
Okay, if not, we will move on to report out a closed session, City Attorney.
Yes, thank you Mayor Mueller, members of the city council. There are two items on this evening's closed session agenda. The first was a performance review of the City Attorney's Office. There was no reportable action on that item. The second was a discussion of the city manager recruitment process and status and there's no reportable action on that item either. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, and there are some empty chairs now, so our guests are more than welcome to come forward and sit down if you'd like. Families with children, you're more than welcome to come forward and sit down. So, we will move on to city council reports and we'll start with Mayor, Council, Council Member Alafano.
Thank you Mayor Mueller. Couple weeks ago, we had tip a cop and I thought it was a good turnout. The interesting part is the next day, Officer Sanchez shows up delivering all the things we bid on, so it's amazing the amount of community spirit goes here and the amount of effort that Deputy Sanchez and the other police officers put into this and I'm hoping it came out well, I think it did, and I hope we can do even better next year. And then on Sunday, a couple, Sundays ago, the mayor and I were in the Shamarita Parade, that was a lot of fun, and I think we had probably the best weather that we've ever had for that parade in history. And then we had the government affairs meeting at the chamber, very interesting, a lot of good discussions there. And then I had the pleasure to attend the eighth grade graduation at Seacrest, again, filling in for the mayor and who couldn't be there and to give the hundred dollar award to Taylor George, she's, we know her, she's really a great kid. There were 19 kids in the graduating class and if I heard right, I think almost 75% of them are going on to Half Moon Bay High School, which is really interesting. And as we're seeing this happen, where more and more of the kids in town are going on to Half Moon Bay High, we're seeing a lot more involvement of the parents in town in the high school and the high school activities, so it's all a good thing then. And then the following night, we had a friend that graduated from Half Moon Bay High School and I think there were 210, I think, that graduated that night. And I have to tell you, the high school does an amazing job in how they lay it out and present it and the kids were all very enthusiastic and it was, it was a lot of fun.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of information.
Excuse me, we are still going through our city council reports.
That's why I have a point of information, I'd like to raise.
All right.
Yes.
Push the button, please. State your name and...
My name is Jonathan Melrod and I am co-council with Arnaldo Casillas for the Serrano family who recently lost their daughter Yanira. And I raise as a point of order, under the Brown Act, it's Section 54954.1, it's within the authority of this body, when there's an emergency situation, to raise an item on the agenda. And I feel that there's many people who came out here to talk about what happened on June 3rd to Yanira and to just proceed with the business without allowing them to speak. There's children, there's kids who have to be home, that I would like to ask you to invoke this provision of the Brown Act and by a majority vote of the council, allow that item to be addressed at this time.
Thank you. City Attorney, would you respond, please?
I have a wrong session.
That's all right, let our City Attorney respond, please.
There's an item on the agenda for oral communications for members of the public on items that are not agendized for a particular discussion on this, on this agenda. I realize there are a lot of people here who are here to speak about the recent shooting incident. The appropriate time to do so would be during the public forum.
Good. May I ask you to stand down and I've been moving this as quickly as possible. We are going to reduce our comments right now, so if you would stand down, please, I will move forward. Thank you for your comments. So, at this time, what we'll do is we will move to public forum and then we will come back to city managers' report. And I have a lengthy report to give on the work we've all been doing, but out of fairness, I will let the public speak and I would hope you will stay and listen to my comments and the work a number of us have been doing for the last 10 days in this difficult situation. We are working night and day to work with this community, but I won't go into my report until I hear your comments. So, we will move forward with the cards I have here regarding this item of deep concern the justice here. So, I'll start with the brother, Tony, please, come forward. And we're going to do about three minutes for each card, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm here on behalf of my sister Yanira Serrano, the young woman who got shot and killed two weeks ago. I'm here demanding justice and with the help of you guys. Basically, I'm asking for criminal investigation, a transparent criminal investigation into the fatal incident that happened to my sister. Here I have a few people who are supporting this resolutions, maybe they can stand up It's really overwhelming what is happening to the family. I have few people here that can talk about what happened and maybe come to a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, our thoughts are with you. I believe it's Dialma Morales, is that correct?
Yes, good evening, buenas tardes, buenas noches a todos. I'm part of an organization called Stop Mass Incarceration, Police Brutality Repression and the Criminalization of a Whole Generation. And I'm speaking here today in support of this community, in support of Yanira's family, also demanding justice, transparency. The problem is, we've been going to communities like Santa Rosa, to Salinas, San Francisco, where this rash of killings at the hands of the police have been going on for a long time and people are demanding justice, but once it comes to investigations, there isn't that transparency and we've seen over and over again that justice has not been found. So, you know, I'm here to show there is support, to let the community here know, this is not just a Half Moon Bay issue, but it is happening all over and it has to stop. I want to, quiero decir rápidamente, soy con el grupo alto a la encarcelación de masa, los asesinatos policiales, la represión y la criminalización de una generación. Estamos aquí en apoyo a la familia y a la comunidad, pero quiero también que se den cuenta que esos problemas están pasando en muchas, muchas comunidades. Hemos ido a Santa Rosa, hemos ido a Salinas, en San Francisco, en Pacifica, esto está ocurriendo una y otra vez con jóvenes afroamericanos, jóvenes latinos, y tenemos que tomar la posición que esto tiene que parar. Y vemos muchas veces que muchas de las investigaciones no son transparentes, no son justas y los resultados no son lo que estamos exigiendo, ¿verdad? Así que aquí solamente quiero decir que estamos aquí de apoyo, eso está pasando en todas partes, en California, en todos los Estados Unidos, así que estamos aquí buscando unidad con todos. Gracias.
Thank you. And next will be Luz, Luz, please. L-U-Z, Luz, yes.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Luz y estoy aquí para ayudar, apoyar a la familia de Yanira Serrano.
Hi, my name is Luz and I'm here to support the family of Yanira Serrano.
Porque queremos justicia.
We want justice.
Es mucho lo que la policía y el sistema policiaco hacen en todo el país, matando gente como si fueran peor que animales. No somos animales, somos humanos también. El ser latino o afroamericano no nos hace menos que los blancos.
It's a lot of injustices that the police are doing around the country, killing people like animals and we're not animals and just because we're Latinos does not mean that we're less than, than white people. We count too, we matter.
Entonces quiero yo y con los que venimos de San Francisco, apoyar esto, la mass incarceration, ¿verdad? Ellos, ¿cómo le dije?, encarcelamientos masivos, la brutalidad policiaca, la represión policiaca, la opresión hacia las mujeres y las comunidades minoritarias y las discriminaciones.
We want to stop the discrimination, the mass incarceration, the abuse that our women are suffering and the abuse of our people and we come here in solidarity from San Francisco.
Queremos justicia.
We want justice.
Estamos aquí reclamando justicia, que sea transparente la ley.
We want transparent justice, that the law will be transparent.
Porque lo que hacen con los policías dicen, sí, lo vamos a enjuiciar, pero lo que hacen es cambiarlos a otro estado, otra ciudad y con goce de sueldo. Y si los suspenden, también con goce de sueldo. Eso no es justo.
Because what they do with the police is they'll just transfer them and they're still getting their pay or they'll send them somewhere else and they're still getting paid and that's not right and that's not justice and they, she wants a transparent investigation of this matter.
Se supone que este país hay igualdad, ¿verdad? Pero no lo hay, es mentira, es pura política, sucia, porque el sistema de gobierno y autoridades no es transparente, es sucio.
Supposedly this country is supposed to be a just country based on equality, but it's not equal. It's not equal, it's dirty, it's politics and it's full of cover-ups.
Entonces, por favor, les pido que hagan justicia al policía que mató a esta niña.
Please give justice and investigate the police that killed this little girl.
Porque ya no vamos a llamar a la policía para que nos proteja, sino para que nos mate, quién va a proteger? Se supone que la policía, la autoridad, es para proteger a la ciudadanía.
Now, we're not going to call the police anymore because we're scared that they're going to kill us and we thought that the police were here to protect us. Now, who do we call?
Thank you.
Gracias.
Jonathan, please come forward.
I'm going to yield the floor to Belinda, who worked with the family.
Very good, yes, please. And if I may ask you, then when it comes to my comments, would you need to translate a couple important times?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Would you help me, please? Thank you.
My name is Belinda Hernandez Ariaga and I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I live here in Half Moon Bay. I live here in Half Moon Bay. I work for the University of California, Berkeley. I'm a doctorate student at the University of San Francisco. I'm a lecturer at Santa Clara University. And I come here with a lot of activism behind my work here with the community of Half Moon Bay. I'm Spanish-speaking. And I came to the sole help of the family on my own. No community organization sent me, no department sent me. And I only say that because I stand here frustrated that in this whole entire situation, no one has come to the aid of this family in terms of an organization from the police department. And it's really sad that the family has suffered this serious, serious situation. I also have a family of law enforcement who I totally understand, they have jobs to do. But in this situation, we really need to have a transparent investigation. We, the family is calling on a town hall meeting with the sheriff's department. We would like to request that. We deserve that. The community of Moonridge deserves that. The people of Moonridge deserve that. And we would like that to happen as soon as possible. And as I sit there looking, as I sit there looking at the department, and I see a substation outside of these people's homes, the children that I work with in this community, the families that I work with, there's a substation, but there's not a mental health crisis to come out on a call when someone has a psychiatric emergency that has schizophrenia and ends up losing their life? This is unbelievable that we have a police substation but not crisis county mental health on the coast. I know San Mateo County has it. I know they're very involved with mental health, but we need it here on the coast. And had we had it that night, it might have made a big difference, and this family wouldn't be sitting here right now with the loss of their loved one. The mother's in Mexico, or she would be in here right now. And I've sat there for two weeks, seeing her grief, crying. And I'm a mom too, and I know you are our parents too. And today it's Yanira, tomorrow it might be one of your relatives, it might be one of our relatives here. My father-in-law has schizophrenia. He's passed now. But I know what it is to see a family go through that. Every day, my clients that I work with, I know that they require medication, treatment, psychiatric support, counseling. And we need to give this Latino community the justice that they deserve by calling on a town hall meeting, responding to them with the sheriff, and literally taking apart this case by case and examining it with the justice that it deserves, and giving it time. And we ask you, mayor and city council, that you really take this case seriously. I think this is one of the first time you see this many Latino families here in this city hall or in this building. And we're begging you today to please, to please take action. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a number more cards, and then I will respond to a number of your questions as soon as I conclude these cards. And the next one will be, I want to say, Alondra Rodriguez? And how many more I have?
Three more.
And there'll be three or four more. And Jonathan, did you want to conclude at the end of the four cards?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Alondra Rodriguez. I'm here, I'm not only here for myself, I'm here for other youth of Half Moon Bay. I wish, I want justice for Yanira because I don't know if the day of tomorrow I'm going to be able to be in my mother's arms again. And I feel like Half Moon Bay needs more safety, and especially now that I will be going to Half Moon Bay High. I feel like safe, I'm, I'm, I feel unprotected. Unprotected. And that's all.
Thank you. We will not let that happen. David Seaton, please.
I would, I think that, I would like to kind of follow up on what she said, just encourage. I think anytime there's a crisis, the initial reaction is, you know, out of concern, you tend to react to things. And I think you see it all the time, that in retrospect, the best thing to do is to get out in front of situations. And I think that, you know, I think that a town hall, I think that it's an opportunity to, to take this. And you guys, you know, there's only so much you can do, but I think that that would go a long way in terms of opening up a dialogue and opening up some relationships. I know that, you know, as a youth growing up here, somebody like Dennis Lubal was a huge influence on my life, you know, and I hope that, you know, there's a, there's a Latino on the sheriff's force right now that is going to step up and, and take on that leadership role in being a friend first and a cop second. Because I think that at the end of the day, the effects from this aren't going to show up today, or tomorrow, or even two years from now. It's going to be 10 years from now, the young eight, nine, 10-year-old kids and what's going on with them. You know, we need to embrace this as an opportunity and really, you know, look ahead and look down the road and use this as an opportunity to unite our community and do whatever we can. And, you know, I think it's so unfortunate, but, you know, I would definitely, you know, encourage you guys to do whatever it is in your power to, to be a part of facilitating that dialogue. So, thank you.
I believe this.
Adriana.
Yeah, Adriana Guzman.
Yes, sir.
I'll put him on at the end.
Good evening. First, I'd like to express my deepest sympathy for the family of Yanira. The news came as a shock, I'm sure, to everyone within this community, but I hope that we can all understand the outrage that the Moonridge community feels at this time. I know that everyone here has a different part of the story that touches their heart in a different way. I implore that the council listens with open minds. This is an issue that everyone should pay attention to, not just the Hispanic community on the coast side. And so I'd like to briefly touch on a few things. Half Moon Bay needs its own police department back. We need officers who have roots in this community and who care about their own people. I want to believe that this tragedy might not have occurred if someone like Dennis Lubal would have arrived on the scene, or former Half Moon Bay police officer Hernán Villalobos. We also need officers who can speak Spanish and communicate with the Hispanic community for the same reasons that I just mentioned. Many people may be aware of the similar situation recently occurred in Pacifica, my hometown. Errol Chang, a mentally ill man, was unjustly shot and killed by the Daly City SWAT team. What can be done to ensure that these occurrences never happen again? If law enforcement is not equipped to handle these types of situations for every member of our community, including the ones with mental illnesses and minorities, what procedures need to be put in place? What changes need to happen? I recently learned of an organization called Crisis Intervention Team International, CIT. They train police officers how to de-escalate situations involving the mentally ill in effective ways without using lethal force. We should learn further about these programs. And if Half Moon Bay stopped for money for these types of opportunities, what about grants or just at least investigating? It pains me that a young girl dying is what it takes to dig deeper into these issues, but please do not let, let us not allow her death to be in vain. Please let her family have justice. Thank you.
You can help me with this one. Is it Dondre? Heater? Yeah, Dondre? I'm not quite sure on the writing there. Bear with me, folks.
Yeah, my name is DeAndre. I'm also from the Stop Mass Incarceration Network. And we are, across the country, building a movement to stop this police terror and the mass incarceration and the demonization and criminalization of immigrant communities, and we see this as part of that. I mean, I was not fortunate enough to, to meet Yanira. Her life has been stolen. A wonderful life of a young girl who, from what I understand, all she wanted to do was be normal. Her family calls for help. And what do they get? Law enforcement that murders her right in front of her family. Come on, can't we do better than that? We have, we have something that we've seen around the country. You talk about transparency. This system is very transparent in the way it treats blacks and Latinos in the shadows as if they aren't even human. And this is an extension of that. As far as changing things down the road, we want to change things now. And we have all the respect in the world of the hundred or so young people that got out in the streets and marched after the funeral of Yanira, and marched the day that she was killed. We need more of that. And we're pledging to stand with the people of Half Moon Bay and Salinas and Santa Rosa and Modesto and all the places around the country where people are being gunned down, unarmed kids. And this transparency of what we're talking about is that police do this over and over and over, and they get away with murder. The fact that this cop is not right now in jail for gunning down a young girl that may have had a butter knife speaks volumes to this police terror that people are supporting. I'm so happy to see people here of all nationalities standing together. And come October, we want this community to be represented in a massive, massive action to stop police murder, the criminalization of immigrant communities, the mass incarceration, and we think the people here could make a big, big effect in doing that. One thing that we've learned is the role of the police is not to serve and protect the community. The role of the police is to serve and protect the system that rules over the community. And I hope the family of Yanira do not hear those cruel words that almost every family hears whose loved one has been killed by the police. Those words are "justifiable homicide." Thank you.
Thank you. Hal, I accepted your card after the thing, so I'll let you make a brief comment, please. And then Jonathan, you will conclude.
I'm Hal Bogner, a citizen of Half Moon Bay. And when I came here, I came here to drop off some info about a different issue, but this is the only issue that I believe here I feel compelled to rise and speak to. Tremendous sympathy for Yanira's family. My wife was a pole worker who probably left Moonridge about 9:00 PM that night. And, you know, I like to think that had an 18-year-old girl with a knife with a six-inch-long blade caused her to feel any danger whatsoever, as a black belt in karate in her 60s, she would have handled it successfully and not been grievously harmed and not felt at risk of her own life. So what perplexes me here is the concept that a peace officer, you know, responds in a situation like that, which, you know, should be dealt with if he has somebody coming at him with a knife, with a nightstick or something, other than feeling as the sheriff's department spokeswoman said within 20 seconds of his arrival that his life was in danger and that he had to act to protect his own life? It makes no sense to me. The calls for transparency in the process of the investigation, I agree with. I believe that day in, day out, more facts should be put in front of the public and that, you know, not, I had an interaction with this officer a week before. It was a perfectly fine interaction, no problems whatsoever. I have no idea what the actual situation was. What's been described doesn't make sense. And thinking about, you know, the idea that, you know, perhaps we have police who have, you know, had too much stress, perhaps we have police who've had initial training in military combat situations where, you know, an enemy combatant is quite different than a citizen. And, you know, the idea of going from a killer be killed situation to a, I've agreed to risk my safety as a peace officer, as a law enforcement officer, to protect others, even from themselves. I'd like to see these issues and the training that our law enforcement receive, you know, brought out into open discussion and where it needs to be addressed, to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And there we'll have a final speaker.
Um, Alice, a friend of the family, asked if she could be the final speaker, so I'll let her be the final speaker.
Okay. You're welcome to come forward then, and this will conclude until my remarks after.
Thank you, council members. Thank you for leaving space for this really important issue. I wasn't going to speak, but I just am moved to have to speak to this because, you know, I've been able to accompany an amazing family. And it is too much for a mother and a father and a brother to bear to lose their family member. And it's too much for all of us to bear. All of us are responsible in this. So I'm calling on you to use the maximum amount of your responsibility, and all of us as a community to come together, because this is, this is just unacceptable. So I want to say, you know, I've been amazed at the strength of Tony and him coming forward. He's an incredibly intelligent person and kind person, and what he keeps on saying is we don't want this to happen again. So that is what we're left with now that we don't, we can't go back. And so some of the resolutions that the community has called on are the following. That June 3rd, the day of Yanira's death, be proclaimed in Half Moon Bay Yanira Serrano Garcia's Memorial Day, to remind us that we are all responsible and we need to provide greater support networks around this. And then that the Half Moon Bay City Council hereby calls upon the San Mateo County District Attorney, Steve Wagstaff, to immediately, thoroughly, and with all appropriate transparency oversight commence a criminal investigation into the June 3rd officer-involved fatal incident. And also that the city council further resolves that at such time, hereby calls for the establishment of a subcommittee, so this just doesn't go away, and to study the current lack of social services devoted to Moonridge community with specific intent of establishing needed services as soon as possible. And we, I also reinforce, you know, I brought in some interfaith ministers who spoke, one of them knew very well about how if you have a crisis intervention council coming to mental health emergency calls, they can de-escalate. What is, the first thing that's going to happen if someone's in crisis and they see the sheriff come in, without that kind of support, it's just going to escalate the situation. So on the coast, we need someone on call to be able to respond, especially because this was a known situation, and it should have been dealt with accordingly. So I reinforce that whole recommendation that we need that person on call here on the coast side to be able to help respond. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And now, may I ask you to come forward? And if I may, thank all of you and our deepest sympathy for this situation here. But I'd like--
Está accediendo sus gracias por estar aquí hoy noche.
So, number one, two days after this incident, the mayor of Pacifica called a special meeting for myself, Supervisor Horzlee, and a number of behavioral health service specialists. So that was on June 10th. We met and discussed for two hours the services that are available to this community, not just the city of Half Moon Bay, this was an unincorporated situation, but we as city of Half Moon Bay and myself with the support of staff and my fellow council members have stepped up to be part of this group to begin the meetings. So we, that is our first meeting I had personally. And we did talk, what Adriana mentioned, we talked about the CIT training for future training, which I believe the sheriff, I talked to him yesterday at great length, and they're working on those things.
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah. Sorry. There's so many things I want to get out to you all. So I think the key is, I did have a meeting with experts in the mental health area, with the health services, what's available and how do we get them throughout the coast side.
So dos días después de la situación que pasó con Yanira, él tuvieron una junta con oficiales de salud mental para hablar de esta situación y a ver qué pueden hacer para tener más servicios aquí, pero están mirando eso ahorita.
And then to follow up on that immediately, on June 10th, we did have a conference call again with-- again with a number of experts in this field, with interim city manager and myself. And I'll give you their names here. So in that meeting with the behavioral health specialists was Dirk Alvarado, number one. And then interim city manager of Half Moon Bay.
(speaking Spanish)
Supervisor Horsley's representatives, he was traveling. And our lieutenant coast side Muncie with representative Spanish speaking from the sheriff's office. And then Mid Peninsula Family Services. And Juan, who represents Moon Ridge.
(speaking Spanish)
And the coordinator of this whole group that we were in discussion for a couple hours on a conference call was the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, who are experts and independent party that work on conflict resolutions and how we bring things back together. And I think the conclusion we came to, we will have a meeting this Thursday night, the 19th of January, at Moon Ridge for the community. And we worked very closely, a number of us worked really hard. There will be a representative from the district attorney's office there to help explain the process of an investigation. And then the following Thursday on June 26.
(speaking Spanish)
At the IDS Hall, which I coordinated with the community today at the IDS Hall, they have offered their hall for a community meeting for all to be invited there to further discuss the issues of what we can, next steps we can take.
(speaking Spanish)
Yes. And then to be announced soon in July, we will be having age bracket group meetings with the rest of the community, probably two more, to have younger children if we need grief counseling. And then we will have the teenage group also to bring them together, to let them talk about this situation and try to work through with experts as yourself is, to see if we can have a better understanding of this. So I think as I mentioned earlier, it is outside of our jurisdiction, but we as a city have stepped up to fund all these functions to make sure that it is done properly and there's proper facilities available for the community. So we will continue to work with all in these very difficult times for the family and others. And there's really nothing else I can say or try to do, but we are continuing to work with everyone we can to be as helpful as possible as a city. And the only thing I could say, there's nothing really you can say in a situation like this, other than my deepest sympathies and also, we're not going to forget this situation. We will work towards, hopefully, with, we find better services on the coast, as has been mentioned tonight, to ensure that these types of situations are met at a different way. And that concludes this part of the agenda this evening.
Thank you. I just ask that, hopefully you will be able to take into account in those processes, including the community members and their voices in the meetings that you all are having.
Yeah, all the experts with Peninsula Conflict Resolution will be documenting everything. And sheriff's office, as I said, I talked to them and I talked to a retired national district attorney individual who has a lot of experience in this. Once the investigation is concluded, they will be in front of the public of the Moon Ridge to explain their positions themselves.
We do urge you to have that town hall meeting, though the community does deserve it.
Yes, thank you all for attending. So at this time, I will go to, I believe we've skipped the city manager's updates, but I think we'd better go back to that and let that, and then we will go to public forum.
I rise to the point of order. I submitted a green card and you didn't call me.
I didn't see a card here. We have not got to the, excuse me, sir, this, we have not got to the public forum. I have you in the public forum card.
All right.
Yep, we didn't forget you.
I thought it was.
So at this time, city managers report, and we will let the room ease up.
So just very briefly, there are four quick updates that I'd like to give you. The general plan advisory committee is meeting on June 26. We are having a McDutra Park Business Roundtable meeting on June 29 to talk about the improvements at McDutra Park and working with the downtown business owners with that. And then we're going to have a community, McDutra Park community meeting to talk about the improvements on July 2, 2014. And then just the last one as note, the Ocean View Park sandbox has been completed. If anybody might have heard that we worked with the mothers group on that, and it was the best sandbox we have on the coast, is what I've been told.
Thank you.
...
And now we'll try to get back on public forum. John Lynch, please.
Members of the city council, I have very easy request for you tonight to uphold. Out of deference to the people and kindness to them, that they're the last item on the agenda. These people want to have the bridge item move to the head of the public, speaking topics, I mean, hearing topics. That's all I request. Try and get us up to the, in the front end of the list, not the last.
Thank you. George Mutif.
Pretty awkward position for me to speak after such an important, such an important item over an occurrence in Half Moon Bay that was just so tragic and just didn't need to But that's something that you guys didn't have anything to do with. What I'd like to speak to is something that you did have something to do with and you can have something more productive and positive to do with going forward. First of all, my name is George Mutif. I live at 408 Redondo Beach Road here in town. You all know me. Some better than others, some for longer than others, but all of you know me. I've made countless trips to this podium over a period of years, many years, to speak to three things primarily. One is to praise. When I see something that in my opinion deserves that recognition and praise, I come here and do that. And even admit when I'm wrong, which is a very difficult process for anybody to do. And I would refer you to the $13 million return that you got going after the Beechwood money as one example. I didn't think you were going to get it, and I admitted that when I came up, and I thanked you for it because that was a hell of a deal. And I really appreciated that, and it deserved the praise. I also come up to criticize. I don't like it, but for some reason I feel compelled that that's my duty to do it. And I do. And I would say that the Main Street Bridge might be an example of that. And the third reason I come up here is to provide general input, and that's why I'm here tonight. I came here tonight to provide the general input regarding this council, this council's decisions, this council's posture, past, present, and going forward. I view this as an opportunity for this council to start healing and uniting this community as elected officials and leaders do, should do. What we saw on June 3 in the ballot in the election was a vote of no confidence. It was about a bridge, but it was really about this council and the division, the further division of this community that this council has purported on its constituents. I would say the recall was equally divisive. You have an opportunity to overcome that. What you can do to unite is you can start with an apology to your constituents for so misreading us, the public, your electorate, the people that voted for you, the reason you're sitting there. That would be a start. The second thing that you can do is you can embrace your constituents through honesty, real transparency, not just some word you look up in a dictionary, but real transparency because everything this city has, we paid for, you and us, all of us, citizens and neighbors.
May I ask you to conclude, please?
In conclusion, the third item that I would suggest is real dialogue, and I think that's what the people that were here earlier would like to see. We don't have enough of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't think we need applause. This is not a circus in here. This is a very serious matter. So next will be Markeith, please.
First of all, thank you so much for all that you do in our community and the way you serve a lot of heavy hearts here today, tonight. And what I have to say kind of pales in comparison. I feel like maybe I should say something sometime down the road, but in a sense, though, there's some brokenness that we experience in our community in this world that we live in, and that's just going to happen. Mistakes are made, even incredibly tragic mistakes. And it is so important that we respond the correct way because that's what really defines a human being, that's what defines our city, that's what defines us, is not that we're not going to make a mistake, because we won't make mistakes. But what happens beyond that is so critically important for such a time as this. And I was one of the proponents of Measure F, and I was certainly happy that it passed. But I was also struggled with a feeling of, I was troubled. I was troubled because I'm a very trusting person and I knew that something kind of had gone wrong. And I remembered thinking that night that I wanted to be part of some kind of resolution. And I'm hoping that the city will reach out to the community with regards to the Main Street Bridge and that we can work together. I want to be a part of that project, whatever it may look like, that we could come together and we can come up with solutions. And whether it's a community group that works with the council and the city employees, I'm not sure what that looks like, but I'm hoping that we can.
I caution you, Mark, this is an agenda item, so go careful there.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I have reconciliation that's heavy on my heart. And I want to be a part of bringing back together that which was broken. And there's some brokenness that needs to be fixed, not just the bridge. And I want to be a part of that. So thank you for letting me have this time.
Thank you for that. At this time, I have no further cards on public forum, and we will move on to the consent calendar, items one through eight. Yeah, we got a mic on.
So I'd like to make a comment on items. Should I make the motion and then the comment, or how do you want that?
Yeah, we can make a motion and then a second and then comment.
Okay. I move to approve consent calendar items one through eight.
Second.
Comments, please?
Yeah, a comment is on item number eight, which is moving forward with the architectural services for McDutra Plaza. And this is an item that came up, a topic that came up a year and a half ago, and it's been on our minds for a while, we've been discussing it for a while, and I'm thrilled to see it move forward. I am aware there are some concerns with any sort of project like this, and I know we'll handle them well, everything from making sure there's access to restroom facilities during any project. But I'm just thrilled to see this go forward for the community, whereas several years ago, we were facing a dire financial situation, and now we're facing a situation we can make really tangible improvements to the community. So I'm thrilled to see it there, and I'm really happy to see this item going forward so we can continue this work.
Further comment? Okay, we'll call for the question, please, on the consent calendar, items one through eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And thank you. Thank you for the team on this past item, for the architectural services and construction documents, so thank you. And we will move on to item nine. Yes, sir?
Well, the request, I mean, item, yeah. The request is made to move the bridge item up, and I don't know that would be any problem. I'm assuming we're talking about number 13, the last item. I don't know if 12 and 13 have to be in order, or if we could do 13 first.
Yeah, I believe, you know, you're really into, number nine should not be lengthy, and then you're going to be getting into 10, 11, 12, 13 quite rapidly. I don't know, city attorney, what's your feeling?
It should be a minute at the most. And then as to the order, you know, that's really up to the discretion of the council if you want to reorder the agenda.
Counsel? Councilman Patrick?
I think as the city attorney said, the ordinance thing, I think is just going to take a motion to pass the ordinance. Then I think we could go ahead and take 13 because it's the valid item, the other ones have nothing to do with. But 13, I mean, 12 and 13 maybe together?
I do have cards on 11 and 11 and 13.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm just talking about the sequence, John, mayor, is because we're doing a California elections on the Main Street Bridge on 12, and then there's one on for the November. So I think instead of taking 13, we should take 12 because if we accept.
I think it's the mayor's prerogative, and I'm going to follow the agenda.
Okay, all right.
So we will follow the agenda and move on with item number nine, I believe.
Yes, thank you. This is an amendment to chapter 1336 of the municipal code relating to sewer service charges. For most residential accounts, sewer
For most residential accounts, sewer service charges are based on an estimate of the prior year's charge using the period November through February. And water consumption data from the Coastside County Water District is used to calculate sewer service charges for the upcoming year. For commercial and certain other accounts, the annual water consumption is used using a whole year's worth of the prior year's data. Under the current code, that's measured from June 1st to May 31st. The proposed amendment would measure instead from April 1st to March 31st, the purpose of which is to provide staff with more time to assist in developing the budget for the upcoming year for sewer service charges and also to provide additional time to make sure that we take all the necessary steps to add the sewer service charge to the assessors' tax rolls, which needs to be completed by August. So that's the intent of this measure. I'm happy to respond to any questions or comments. Recommendation is to introduce the ordinance.
It's a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is that correct? And I have no cards to speak on this item. I can close the public hearing. So comments to staff regarding this agenda item?
No, I think we've discussed this because it does parallel with the water district, and it gives us a better reading and stuff. So I would move to introduce ordinance number C-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay amending Section 13.36.075 Sewer Service Charges of Chapter 13.36, Sewer Permits and Fees of Title 13, Waters and Sewage of Half Moon Bay Municipal Code.
It's been moved in second on this item. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, so ordered. And now moving on to item 10. Is that correct? Okay, who will be reporting on this?
I'll do this one. Mayor, council. This is an update as to where we are with the Main Street Bridge project. After the last meeting we had on the bridge project and after the vote, I thought it would be good to just give the city council and the community an update as to some of the major questions that have been raised. So the first question that was raised was how does the vote impact the testing process and the CEQA-NIPA process? And at this time, we're still bringing forward the testing process as we talked about at the last meeting, where we needed to, for the CEQA-NIPA process, to test the bridge structurally. We're having that item on the agenda tonight. It was delayed from other meetings, as we had talked about, due to waiting for Caltrans to give their final comments on that. So that will be before you tonight. The next question is what is the status of the grant? And at this time, we're still unsure. We're still working with Caltrans to determine the final status of the existing grant. The other question was can other grants be used to make the bridge safe? The answer to that is until we have a project in hand, you know, Caltrans cannot answer that question for us, nor could other agencies. So we're still waiting until we have the final project determined. Does the community of Half Moon Bay have a greater liability now? That was a question that has been raised. And the answer is we have the same liability that we had prior to the vote on the bridge. Nothing has changed. We're still moving forward as we had anticipated with A, trying to fix the deficiencies that we know about. Another question that was raised was what has this been paid out to date of the bridge project? As of the time that I wrote the staff report, we had paid out about $270,000, not including staff time of this amount. We have been reimbursed $197,000. I think there are some warrants on your list that had taken place prior to this meeting and prior to the election. I think we're in about the $320,000 range at this point. And if you look through your warrants, there are some warrants on this council agenda that was related to that that happened earlier. And then the question is how will the project be paid for in the future? At this point in time, we're anticipating that any additional cost that we will have at this point going forward, until we know the ultimate design of the bridge or the status of grants, is that they would be coming out of the city of Half Moon Bay's revenues. We have budgeted $503,000 for this project to date. This is from various sources like gas tax and Measure A. So we'll be using those funds to pay for whatever elements that we need to do in the meantime. And that's just a quick update on the questions that I had been hearing about concerning the bridge project. If there are any other questions, I'll be more happy to respond.
Questions from the council?
I just think it's important that we say again that it appears that the expenditures are under $300,000 because I think we heard amounts of like millions of dollars had already been expended. And I think now that staff has gone through and accounted for all the expenditures, we're under $300,000. Thank you.
So would you mind answering a brief question regarding the Caltrans potential grant? They need a project before they will look at another potential grant. Is that kind of the way I've been reading and hearing from individuals?
That's what we've been hearing. I mean, they're still working through their process, and they're not done yet. So they will give us a final determination as to what the status of the current grant is or what other types of grants we could be eligible for. So I don't want to speak for Caltrans fully at this point, but that is, you know, an indication that we're receiving. So yes.
Right. Is there any further direction we'd like to give to staff? Or this is pretty thorough explanation? Yes, Councilman Qualcheck?
No, I think it's fine. It's a good update of the status. And I just echo Councilmember Ella Final's comments. Thank you.
So if not, there's no action on that item, and we will move on to item 12. I'm 11, I apologize. I had a lot of paperwork up here today. So we will move on to item 11. And remind me, I do have a couple cards on this.
Right. So item 11 is the request for proposals and qualifications concerning the testing for the Main Street Bridge. I'll turn it over to Dante to walk you through this item.
Thank you, welcome, Dante.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the city council will get the PowerPoint up and going in a second here. But this is an item for the approval to advertise for proposals to test the Main Street Bridge. And as you know, the existing bridge, concrete arch, was built in 1900, has two lanes within 24 feet of travelway. It's 80 feet long, and it has sidewalks on each the east and west side with a water main on the west side that was installed in the 1940s. Just advance the slides. So due to the age of the existing bridge and some of the visible signs of wear, the testing analysis will be used to verify the structural integrity of the existing bridge. And moving forward, the testing and environmental review process will provide some important information that will be relevant for the city and the city council to look at any potential future decisions about the bridge. There are several issues that are of concern. One is the wing wall adjacent to the abutments. There are significant cracks, diagonal cracks in the wing walls, which indicate that they have essentially separated from the abutment. Another concern, major concern, is the concrete arch and spandrel walls. There's heavy cracking along the outer curve of the arch, and it's walls on both sides of the bridge. There's concerns about these steel brackets that support the sidewalks that appear to need some work. And there's a question about the adequacy of them being able to hold up the sidewalk for, support the pedestrian sidewalk.
May I ask you a quick question at that part, too? I got to get off my quick question because there's very serious questions. Would we need to go to a vote of the people to repair those brackets on the sidewalk?
I believe that's probably a question for a city attorney.
The measure specifies that the bridge cannot be demolished or enlarged without a subsequent vote. I guess the question is whether complete replacement of the pathways would constitute a demolition under the wording of the measure. Unfortunately, I don't think the measure is crystal clear about that. But I would argue that replacement of existing pathways with those of similar design without altering the dimensions probably wouldn't run afoul of the restrictions of the measure and so probably wouldn't need a vote.
Thank you. Continue on, please.
The other area of concern is condition of the timber piles. They were installed over 100 years ago, and so testing would verify the condition of those and the effectiveness of those piles. There's also a concern about water leaching through the concrete. There appears to be water leaching through, which would suggest there may be some continuing corrosion of the steel and the steel reinforcement of the bridge. So in your packet, you have the RFP, and it identifies five elements that we'll be looking for in terms of testing. We need to verify the condition of the concrete. We need to investigate the cracking to determine how deep it is. We need to investigate the footings and see the condition of them. We need to determine the existence and the condition of the piles and also assess the reinforcement, the steel reinforcement inside of the bridge structure. After the assessment and investigation is complete, there'll be a summary evaluation of the structural integrity of the bridge. And also, it will be used to provide the criteria of design parameters for evaluation of any rehabilitation alternatives. Some other important things to note in the testing details is that the RFQP will solicit professional services from firms that have experience in testing older concrete steel structures. That's one of the requirements. Also, we will be selecting firms that are independent of the city's current consultants to provide the testing services. And the test analysis will provide information required for the structural rehabilitation phase that I talked about a little bit earlier. Once the exact cost of the analysis is known, we will return to the city council to report that and ask for authorization to award a contract to a firm. And as the city manager mentioned earlier, the cost for the testing will be paid for through the city or by the city. So the next steps, as I mentioned, will evaluate the proposals, return to city council. After the testing process, the analysis will be used to inform the environmental process that is moving forward, but also, again, to determine the feasibility of rehabilitation options. So tonight, we're asking that council authorize staff to advertise and distribute the Main Street Bridge testing requirements. Tonight, I have with me Rob Kalkbrenner, who is the project manager for Main Street Bridge, and also our city engineer, Mo Sharma. And we're available to answer any questions.
Questions to staff at this time?
Thank you for the report, and I have a couple of questions. In reading your summary and of the approach to testing, the things, the items that will be included in the testing, I want to verify that we received, and this reflects input from Caltrans directly. Is that the case?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Rob Kalkbrenner, Common Goal Consulting Group. I'm the Main Street Project, Bridge Project Manager. Yes, we have discussed this with Caltrans. They have reviewed the testing as we've laid it out.
So they reviewed it, but did they provide input to it? And did they say, yes, this is the testing approach we would support?
Yes, we got a go-ahead from them. This is the standard testing from American Society of Testing and Materials that Caltrans and anyone across the nation employs.
Thank you. That was an important element for me. I want to make sure any testing we do also coincides with that which Caltrans would support and recommend and stand behind. The second is a comment and a question. It's on the proposal content. I know this item references experts with experience in older concrete and steel structures. I'd like to ask and ask the council to consider adding an item for proposal content, which is a summary of the vendor's experience with older concrete structures, including historic structures. My last comment.
Any comments on that? Can we have a common consent that we agree to Councilman Qualcheck's add on to this? We didn't have that before, so that way they have historical experiences. Okay? That's recorded. Thank you. Any further questions? Otherwise, we have cards here. And if there's no more comments from the council at this time, we'll call on the cards. The speaker's first will be Jerry Steinberg, I believe, on item 11.
It was Jerry Steinberg, 591 Terrace Avenue, Half Moon Bay. The first part would be, I thought that Rick's comment about adding historic was one of the comments I was going to make, which is important that whoever does the review has not just worked on older bridges, but on historic bridges because that's a real specialty. The, one of the things that was mentioned was that Caltrans has reviewed this, but you haven't had any community input. There hasn't been a meeting where the RFP is shown as a draft and where any input could be put in. Some of the questions that I would have is, has Coastal Commission, has anybody run anything by the Coastal Commission, especially when we're going to be digging in the creek? Have they been asked what the criteria, what point would a CDP be required? How much work can you do? How much mucking around can you do before you have to get a CDP? The transparency in the RFP, there is some mention about some testing methods. One of them is an electrical method. For me, there are many of these methods that come about that are in place for a while. When I worked for the Highway Department, we had, instead of a slump test, which is a cone, and you would test if it could take a certain height of slump, there was an interesting thing at the University of California. They came up with a test called the Kelly Ball Test, which was hemisphere, and you dropped it down. I don't know if they still use it. But there's also, for testing a concrete, the engineer from URS kind of belittled it, but it's very non-invasive. It's just called a hammer test. There's a hammer that just, you hit the concrete, and you see what kind of energy. It doesn't give you super accuracy, but it will tell you whether you have 2,000 or 8,000 PSI. So what I'm really asking for is that there be, before the RFP is let out, that there be some kind of a meeting where the community, we're trying to get this thing together, we're trying to get transparency. We don't want to be faced with later on somebody raising a question, well, you didn't ask the right questions. That's really what I think would be important, is to have a chance to... It wouldn't take very long. And there are other members in the community on the contracting side that might want to have some input into this also. There's probably some other ideas out there. So I think there should be a meeting. I'll conclude with the questions about the width of the bridge. You might notice that Caltrans is funding, has... You might notice that Caltrans is funding, has allowed funding for, I guess, the Hillsburg Bridge, and it still has only two lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, David Blobby.
And that's a final card on this item.
What an amazing night. 200 people, maybe, 150 people. What a community. Unfortunately, and there's a message here, I think for you and for all of us, it took the failure of a bridge due to maintenance, a project that is in shambles because of a lack of maintenance effectively, and the death of a young woman. If that doesn't speak to how important transparency is in our community, and what Jerry just said and what all the other people that came up here and spoke to you said, I don't know what does. Ironically, I was going to speak about transparency tonight, and the reason I'm speaking about the RFQP, RFQP, is because there is no transparency in the process that you have laid out. And I'm not being critical of it, I'm making an observation. The reason we're here today is because your constituents, rightly or wrongly, believe that there was a complete lack of transparency and lack of ability to even be moderately informed about what was happening with the bridge until it was a done deal. You can prevent that from happening again by doing what you just did, as the council five minutes ago, when you added the wording to the resolution, to wit. Add wording that, well, the meeting, I'll let you figure out with Jerry, add wording that after the proposals are, after the closer date of the proposals has expired, the proposals will be on the city's website the next day, or as soon as practicable afterwards, with the bids, the bid amounts, and the specific proposals, so that we can see what you're considering, so it's not happening in the background, and we all show up in mid-September, whenever that meeting is, and get told this is what you're going to get. I have very deep concerns, as does Jerry, about some of the testing methodologies. There's no load rating or load testing specified to be done. You're analyzing all the parts of the bridge. You're analyzing my elbow, my hip, but you're not asking me what I can do. So there are concerns there in the community, and the way to head that off is to include the community in this process. The last thing I want to touch on, because I know Councilman Alfano and Kowalczek don't want to be inaccurate in their statements, is the amount of money that was spent on this project, and I've taken a pretty close look at this. Mr. Schillinger is absolutely correct, $297,000 or $279,000. The key word is not counting staff time. The city attorney came to the council at the first meeting in December, five months into the fiscal year, requesting another $165,000 because he had already burned through $195,000 on the Main Street Bridge project, primarily. It's disingenuous to offer that we've only spent $279,000 on the bridge. That's what Caltrans is going to compensate us for. They're not going to compensate us for the money that was spent compensating Mr. Kanati. Thank you very much for your time and your effort.
Thank you. I have no further cards on this item. I'll bring it back to the council and staff. Any questions or comments to staff?
No, I think the staff report is very thorough, and I think it's important to understand that this isn't an RFP where we're saying, give us a proposal, and then we're going to go ahead and pick it. We're actually asking them for the qualifications and their approach to how they would test. And I'm sure the different firms, engineering firms, will probably have different approaches, which will give the city time to look at this and see what will give us the best approach to tell us the condition of the bridge, and then what can be done going forward. So I think this is good, and it's going to give us plenty of time to go through all of these reports once they come back. So unless there's any other questions, I'd recommend we authorize staff to advertise and distribute the Main Street Bridge testing inspection analysis-related request for qualifications and proposal.
Second. Comments, please.
Yeah, I have a comment. So my understanding is with this action, we'll put a request for qualifications. At that point, that'll come back to us for review, and we will review them in a public forum. I know staff will make a recommendation, and those qualifications will come to us, and we'll be able to review them in a public forum, at which point our community will be able to view them, understand them, and provide comment through the standard public process. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be what we would anticipate, that we would receive them, we would then, at a public council meeting, provide your, yeah, provide a recommendation.
And to further understand, these are requests for qualifications. This is not the specific strategy and approach to do the testing, and at that point, we would welcome comments from the public. And I, Jerry, I take your point to heart. I think it makes sense, and at that forum, I would welcome seeing, getting the hearing from you when we receive those requests for qualifications back. So thank you for your comments.
And my comment is, you know, there's a possibility there might not be any interest in testing situation. There is always that possibility out there, and then we would have to come back and figure out next steps, what we can do. I think the key for me is that Caltrans is on board with this. I know it's a slow process, but at least it's a beginning. We haven't made any decisions, but we have stepped up to say we are willing to spend the money to look at this testing potential. Any other comments or questions?
Just to clarify the process, what we would be requesting the city council to do is to put out a request for qualifications and proposals, so we'd be receiving both the firms' qualifications and the method that they would anticipate testing coming back to us, all in one document. So that way, the council could review the qualifications and review the different methods that the different firms would recommend. So you'd have both of them at one time.
Yes, Councilman Kowalczek? Dante, please.
Unfortunately, I don't know what happened to our speaker system. We're now on a one red light at a time system, and it's not conducive for being interactive. And thank you, Shabon. So the, which is also fine, I understand the difference, and it still will come back for public input, and I want that input. And at that point, we can give suggestions, revisions, refinements, and input to a small, a subset of vendors or a single vendor, and figure out how to move forward, again, reflecting Jerry's comments. So thank you. I'm fine with this.
Any further comments, Dante?
Just to clarify a couple of things, the RFP, RFQP does ask the firm to provide the thickness and compressive strength, the reinforcement, so it is more inclusive of what the actual strength of the bridge is, including the proposal. The other issue that came up was the issue about a CDP requirement. Yes, we have been talking to the Coastal Commission staff at a staff level about the testing, and we intend to adhere to any requirements related to the testing.
One final question. Would the bridge be closed during any part of the testing process? We would know that once they bring back their qualifications and proposal.
That's correct.
Thank you. If not, at this time, we can have a motion. We have a second, so we can do all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered for zero. Moving on to item 12.
Thank you, Mayor Muller, members of the city council. This is a report pursuant to Elections Code, Section 9212, on the Main Street Bridge Preservation Act, which, as you are aware, has qualified for the November ballot. Under the Elections Code, when the ballot, or when the petition has been certified as receiving sufficient votes to qualify for the ballot, then a report is submitted to the city council, in which you have a couple of choices as to how to deal with that. But the Elections Code also gives you the opportunity to request a staff report on the measure's effect. What will it be on, for instance, the fiscal impact, the internal consistency of the measure with existing planning documents like the general plan, local coastal program, et cetera. At the last meeting, it was staff's recommendation to ask the council to direct that this report be prepared. At the time, that was primarily because the two items that were on the November 3rd ballot, that same evening as the council meeting, the votes hadn't been determined yet, and so there was considerable uncertainty about how one or both of those measures might affect this ballot measure. That uncertainty has been resolved. Measure F passed by a substantial majority vote, and so the remainder of this report is going to be very quick, because the city manager, the interim city manager, has always given you, has already given you a report on essentially what the effect of Measure F will be in terms of qualification for grant funding, limitations on the city's ability to demolish or replace the bridge. In my view, the Main Street Bridge Preservation Act really will have no additional effect beyond that which Measure F already provides for. The primary differences between Measure F and this measure are some of the whereas language, some of the findings, but in terms of the substantive effect of this measure, it doesn't really have any. So I don't have anything substantive to report that, in addition to what the interim city manager already provided you. But I'm happy to respond to any council member questions or comments.
Council members?
Again, I think there doesn't seem to be any action on this item. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we can move on to item 13.
Yeah, this is Shabon's item, so I'll let her take it.
You need some, I need some help then, Shabon. Go for it.
Uh-oh, okay. So I'm not going to, I'm trying not to be too repetitive of the previous items, just a quick recap for the benefit of the public. On February 10th, the city received a notice of intent to circulate an initiative petition entitled the Main Street Bridge Preservation Act. And on April 16th, the initiative proponents submitted signed petitions. The county elections department verified signatures on these petitions, and at the June 3rd city council meeting, staff brought to you a notice of sufficient petitions. And as the city attorney mentioned, you, at that same meeting, also asked staff to prepare a report regarding the effects of the initiative, the proposed initiative, and you just accepted that report. And so this evening, the city council can take one of two actions regarding this Main Street Preservation Act initiative petition. You may either adopt a resolution that would add the Main Street Bridge Preservation Act to the November 4th, 2014 election, or you can adopt the Main Street Bridge Preservation Act as an ordinance of the city of Half Moon Bay. The city attorney reviewed some of the differences in the two measures, and provided in your report this evening is a sample resolution and also the ordinance, and staff's recommendation is that you give us direction regarding which of these two options you'd like to pursue. And we are available to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, council. We have a couple of cards, if you'd like to hear them, and then we will make comments. So first one would be Harvey Rhabak, please.
Harvey Rhabak, 464 Pine Avenue. I'm speaking as the president of the Coastside Democratic Club. The board has authorized me to tell you that we highly, highly encourage the citizen initiative to be placed on the November ballot. We're a Democratic club with a capital D, but we believe in democracy with a small D, and I'm sure you're aware, more than twice as many people vote in the November election as in the June election. And council has said many times that they're interested in what the people have to say. Well, put it on the November ballot as a citizen initiative, and by the way, it's the only citizen initiative. Measures E and F were put on by the council. But if you respect the will of the people who have put this initiative together and worked hard to get the right number of signatures, we urge you to leave it on the ballot and let the citizens decide what is best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah Ruddick. That's the final card on this item.
Deborah Ruddick, 367 Metzger Street in Half Moon Bay, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Main Street Bridge. And on behalf of our group and the voters of Half Moon Bay, we respectfully request that you adopt the Main Street Bridge Preservation Act as an ordinance of the city of Half Moon Bay. We're very sensitive to the concerns raised by Harvey Rhabak and the Coastside Democrats, but after deliberation, we feel that there is such minimal difference between Measure F and the citizens' initiative, that we think it would be respectful and responding to the will of the voters by simply adopting it at this meeting and avoiding, you know, additional conflict in November. So that would be our request, and I just want to thank the voters for taking the time to educate themselves about the measures on the ballot, as well as the initiative. Many people stopped and spoke with John Lynch and others of us to ask, you know, important questions about the effect of the measures, both on city's finances, on the structures themselves. So it was really a breathtaking experience to see people engaging in their civic duty. We thank you, voters of Half Moon Bay. And again, I want to reiterate what David Blobby and especially Mark Heath said tonight about how exhilarating this meeting was tonight. I can't remember a meeting like this in the city of Half Moon Bay, and I've been sitting where you're sitting. I think you have a wonderful opportunity to use these sorrowful circumstances to reach out to the Latino community and find ways to interact with them, even if they live in the county. You know, Half Moon Bay has a sizable population of Latinos, and everybody's family and friends and citizens, so I think it would behoove us to reach out on a more regular basis and become friends and neighbors in our community. If I could have done a word cloud tonight, certainly transparency would have stood out very tall, and open minds listened to me, heard a lot of things, but I think Mark Heath summed it up best, and that is, he said, "I want to be a part of this process," and that's what transparency in government sort of boils down to. So I would take that message to heart and find a way to open yourselves up, open the process up, and have a real conversation. That's what we had tonight. It was kind of, it was kind of messy, but it was fun, it was exhilarating, and that's the real stuff of community and the real stuff of democracy. So let's work together. We want to be a part of your process, and thank you for hearing us tonight and having this on the agenda.
Thank you for your comments. Council, want to discuss this a little bit more? Someday, we're going to have a big city hall with a nice diocese out here.
So adhering to the one red light policy, so apparently Half Moon Bay is a one light town, one red light town. So I want to make a couple of comments, and I, if you're not aware, but you probably are, I was pretty involved in the Measure E, Measure F process, and I was supporting Measure E because, based on input analysis, I felt strongly that that was the right thing to do. The vote of the people is very clear, and if you follow, I think I was pretty accurately quoted in the regional media afterward, after the election, that the vote of the public was very clear, and I will embrace that outcome. I did so immediately, and I do so now, and support that outcome, and I'm not going to challenge that outcome in the fall, and I'm going to shortly make a motion so that we can move on. And I want to echo something Mark had to say, and I wonder what time Mark has to get up in the morning, because he's been sitting on his hand for like an hour. But it's really, and my comments to the media emphasize this as well, that the vote is clear, and that's the policy of the community, and I'm going to embrace that and support that. that, and make sure that is adhered to. But I was asked, what is the most important thing going forward? And I said, it's not about the bridge at all. The most important thing going forward is the healing of our community. We had a rift between friends and community members, and we, as far as I'm concerned, we're still friends of the same community, and we need to heal and come together and move forward. Our process and all of this has been obviously very transparent. We've had dozens of meetings. We've not always had agreeable outcomes, but we've definitely tussled it out and gone through many, many meetings. Official meetings with the public, private meetings at various restaurants in the community and meeting places. But that's another here and there. Going forward, the most important thing is that we move forward together. We're behind the policy of the Main Street Bridge, and that dictated by Measure F, and if there is not any other comments, I'd like to make a motion. So I move to adopt ordinance number C underscore 14, an ordinance amending policy 7-8 Visual Resources of the Local Coastal Program Land Use Plan, LUP, and Section 18 dot 39 dot 045 of the Implementation Plan Title 18 to prohibit demolition or expansion of the Main Street Bridge without obtaining majority voter approval for such demolition or expansion at a subsequent election. I'm assuming you don't have to read the rest of that?
Second. Well, his. It's been moved in second. Comments? Councilmember Alafano? Any comments? Comment, and then I'll conclude with my comment.
I'd like to ask this be a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Of course, but before that, I'd like to just say that, you know, this was a pretty challenging time for anyone in elected office. There were some pretty mean-spirited things said, and I hope those are being healed up here. A couple quotes, I came across Hillary Clinton's book the other day, and she says, "When you're in elected office, you will get a lot of criticism." And boy, that sure has happened, but the key is try not to take it personal, but we do take it personal, to be honest with you. And just so, what Deborah mentioned a little earlier about playing open transparency and stuff, and I just happened to look at the date and reminded, 51 years ago today, I stepped up to serve and left town and went on from there. And part of that little quote I still have around what the is, "You have to play by the rules in what good faith democracy demands." And I hope I've always played by the rules, and I hope other people try to play by the rules what good democracy demands. So I just have to tell you, these 51 years went past, but the last six months have been pretty damn tough. So let's hope we can move forward, and call for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, so ordered, and that concludes our agenda this evening, I believe. Or Councilman Alafano? Was it? That concludes the meeting.
I think it would be good to consider at our next meeting that we ask staff to agendize the concept of a Citizens Advisory Committee for the Main Street Bridge, similar to what we have with the general plan, and I think we're looking forward with the bike and circulation type of advisory committee. So I would recommend that we consider putting it on the next meeting agenda.
Comment, Qualcheck?
No, I think that's a fine idea.
All right, so staff can bring that back to us, and we can discuss it as an agenda item. So now we will adjourn the meeting.